Seventeen twenty-nine? Yeah. Oh, uh, actually. Hold on. Sorry, sorry, I apologize for the interruption. Okay, so we have to reply, please. Congratulations.
The Eisenhower Leadership Award. One nation, one God, individual liberty in justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Verona.
Mr. Budewood.
President.
Mrs. Colombo.
Here.
Mr. Gersmeyer.
Here.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Pontillo.
Here.
Mrs. Kreis. Mrs. Semler.
Here.
Mr. Snead.
Here.
Dr. Romano.
Here. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend board meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be set to the following announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, Township of Washington Administration Building, Township of Washington Free Public Library, The Record, Community Life, and Pascagay Press. Okay, minute approval. Can we have a motion to approve following meeting minutes? We have from August twenty-sixth, executive session minutes, August twenty-sixth, regular B O E public meeting minutes, the September thirteenth, policy committee meeting minutes, and the September fifteenth, finance and facilities committee meeting.
A big motion to accept all.
Uh, thank you. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hamlin, thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Budewood.
Roll call, sorry.
Yes. Mrs. Colombo.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Mr. Gersmeyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Semler.
Yes.
Mr. Snead.
Yes.
Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Would you carry it?
So, we're going to D P from our agenda tonight, and let me just start by apologizing for the board's delay. Typically, we don't like to start a board meeting twenty-nine minutes late. We're actually in the middle of a safety and security matter in our executive session. And so, out of respect for the families that have come tonight to receive awards, student awards, we're going to actually jump down to that area of the agenda and present the awards, and then the board is going to have to go back into deliberation in the executive session for a short period, only because we need to meet with our attorney, who has limited time with us tonight, and then we'll come back into public session. And we'll do our best to keep you all posted as we make our way through that executive session. Again, I do apologize, there's not things for which you can plan, but they do arise from time to time. Okay? So, with that, let's go right down to, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, and we're looking at subsection A, B, and C. So, we're going to start with awards and recognition, and this is actually for the Eisenhower Leadership Award. We have a special request to actually just explain the award, present the award, and then we will read the resolution, which is a little bit of a deviation from our general practice, but for this particular situation, I think it's a good one. And so...
Okay. Great. Dr. Romano, President of the Board. Dr. Mortimer, good to see all of you at that again. For those who don't know me, my name is Steve Kalish. I'm President of Washington Township, former board member. I'm also a former Army officer and nineteen-eighty-two graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point. I'm here today representing the West Point Society of New Jersey, which is an organization of graduates and friends of West Point who live in New Jersey. Every year, we sponsor that Dwight D. Eisenhower Leadership Award at about a hundred high schools throughout New Jersey. The purpose of the award is to recognize an exceptional high school junior who demonstrates outstanding performance in the areas of academics, athletics, community service, good citizenship, and leadership. The award is selected by the school principal and staff. The award includes a portfolio with a formal certificate of recognition for the student and a display plaque for the school. I've been presenting this award at Westwood High School since two thousand and one, this is the twenty-first year that I'm presenting this award. And I like to read the previous award winners, because I know that many of you know them, and the board members know many of them as well. Each of them are outstanding students in their own right, and they're all very successful now. So, it kind of puts a contact in context to the awardees this evening. So, the first awardee was John Tenbov in two thousand and one, Daniel Jarom, Jessica Bachner, Alexandra Glazer, Walter Joseph, John Garland, Chris Murphy, Tara Keegan, Dave Mena, Warren Saunders, Evan McLaughlin, Amanda Perola, Jessa Postestivo, Katie Kalish, Alina Alfion, Brian Kim, who just graduated from West Point, by the way, Camila Butel and Sophia Butel, Hannah Kim, Robert Lomer, and Isabel Gray. So, this year's winner is Marta Bistrasca, and I'll ask her to come up while I talk a little bit about her accomplishments. So, Marta, come on up. So, Marta typified what we're looking for in this award. She's an exceptional student athlete in the school and a leader. She's in the top ten percent of her class and is a member of the English and History Honor Societies. She's also a member and president of the National Honor Society. Last year, she got three A P classes as a junior, and I got four supplies on all those tasks. Congratulations. This year, she's taking four more. It's one of the things we like to see in students at high school, is taking A P classes. You know, those who don't know, A P classes are college-level classes. They get credit for those classes if they take them in high school at most colleges. So, it's a tremendous extra effort that's required to take those classes in high school. Marta's also a three-season varsity participant, varsity athlete. She participates across country in winter track as well as spring track, and is a distance runner. I can't blame her for anything, so that's great. She's co-captain of the debate team at the high school and volunteers a significant amount of hours for her church throughout the entire year. Couple of interesting things about Marta that I think you guys might be interested in. First of all, she's fluent in Polish, so that's worth it. She's looking forward to doing triathlons in college. So, for those who don't know what a triathlon is, you have to be a pretty decent athlete to be a triathlete. And she's thinking about pursuing a career in politics or law. So, I'd like to congratulate Marta. I'll read the certificate. So, Dwight D. Eisenhower Leadership Award, awarded for excellence in leadership, character, academics, athletics, community service, and citizenship. Marta Bistrasca, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kalish. Actually, the board has a resolution that we'd like to read into the record, and then we actually also have a certificate for Marta. So, Marta, once we read the resolution, if you could just come down, Dr. Mortimer, and I will present you with the certificate.
Okay, this is fourteen A. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas the Westwood Regional School District is one of several high schools to participate in the Dwight D. Eisenhower Leadership Award, sponsored by the West Point Society of New Jersey. And whereas each year, the high school selects candidates in their junior year to receive the award who exhibit exceptional performance and potential in the areas of the academics, athletics, community service, good citizenship, and leadership. And whereas, the Westwood Regional School District would like to recognize Marta Bistrasca, twelfth grade student, for earning the Eisenhower Leadership Award. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby congratulates Marta for this accomplishment. Directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education and directs the superintendent of schools to present the student with a suitable certificate of recognition. Congratulations, Marta.
Need a second?
Second.
Second. All in table?
Aye.
Motion B. Okay, next up, that's a motion B and Mr. Gersmeyer, thank you.
Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas Eagle Scout represents the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Scouts D S A program of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas, the Westwood Regional School District would like to recognize James Stickell, twelfth grade student, for earning the rank of Eagle Scout. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby congratulate James Stickell for this accomplishment. Directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education and directs the superintendent of schools to present the student with a suitable certificate of recognition. Congratulations.
So, my Eagle Scout project was the Township of Washington Leadership Award, located next to the Township Library. And so, for my project, I conducted two fundraisers. The first was a spaghetti dinner fundraiser, and the second was buy brick fundraiser. That allowed people the opportunity to purchase personalized engraved bricks to honor loved ones or simply show support for veterans. And in total, I raised over thirty thousand dollars, and for my project, I installed a seat height wall where people can sit and reflect over the lake. In front of it is a brick patio with over three hundred and fifty-one engraved brick banners, and there's flags for each of the military armed forces.
Okay, next up, Mr. Budewood. Hold on, hold on, sorry. All in favor?
Sorry?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas the College Board's Advanced Placement A P program offers students the opportunity to take challenging college-level courses while still in high school. And whereas, successful performance, on the end of course A P exams, potentially qualifies students to receive college credit, advanced placement, or both, at colleges and universities worldwide. And whereas, the College Board annually grants the academic distinction of A P scholar to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more A P exams. And whereas, that the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Iris Ballard, Christian Bazas, Amelia Bender...
Mr.... I apologize, what I was about to say before I interrupted Mr. Rosado was that we'd like to read the student name one at a time so he can come down, we can present him with their award.
Okay.
And then shake the...
Start. We'll start with Iris Ballard. Christian Bazas. Amelia Bender. Marta Bistrasca. Dr. Romano, do you want all the students to wait to take one picture at the end as well?
That'd be great.
Okay. So, the next one is Katherine Chung. Matthew Esselmore. Allison Ferner. Erica Frakov. Tyler Danger. Isla Guehler. Jennifer Hoyles. Joshua Kim. Kaylee Clavish. Sophie LeMann Waite. Megan O'Malley. Manusha Palamati. Ryan Quigley. Stacy Singer. Connor Stapleton. Andrew Huntlin. Sami Wadi. And Bianca Werhart. For earning the honor of A P scholar, which recognizes exemplary college-level achievement on the Advanced Placement Program exams. And whereas, the College Board annually grants academic distinction of A P scholar with honors to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all A P exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And whereas, that the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Salvatore Caporale. Danielle Davis. Matthew DeMarbo. Christopher Higa. Kayla Umbraw. Olivia Larson. Taken Park. Isabel Rea. For earning the honor of A P scholar with honor, which recognizes exemplary college-level achievement on Advanced Placement Program exams. And whereas, the College Board annually grants the academic distinction of A P scholar with distinction to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all A P exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Wow. Whereas, that the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Tatiana Butel. Marcus Chimo. Ashley Francis. Claudia Hastings. Abigail Hill. Kayla Jarski. Herman Karakashian. Megan Butel. Emily Recia. Reeve Schneider. Gabriella Taveroni. Hannah Boe. Andrew Zewick. For earning the honor of A P scholar with distinction, which recognizes exemplary college-level achievement on Advanced Placement Program exams. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby congratulates these students for their accomplishments. Directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education and directs the superintendent of schools to present the student with a suitable certificate of recognition. Congratulations to all of you. I am completely amazed by every single one of them. So, congratulations. Need a second?
Second.
Dr. Romano, do you have a motion?
Okay, thank you. So, I'd like to actually make a motion that we go back into executive session.
I make a motion to go back into executive session.
You can. So, you should go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah. Right, and second?
Second.
Roll call?
Apologize.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And again, I apologize. We will keep you updated. Our goal is to go back to the twenty-three. It's seven fifteen now, so hopefully no more than thirty minutes. We'll provide you with fifteen-minute updates. That seems like the... Students, we won't be insulted if you'd like to leave during that time. Thank you for coming out during this rainy night, and congratulations today.
Page thirty-seven. Roll call? Mr. Budewood. Mrs. Colombo.
Here.
Mr. Gersmeyer.
Here.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Pontillo.
Here.
Mrs. Kreis. Mrs. Semler.
Here.
Mr. Snead.
Here.
And Dr. Romano.
Here.
Okay. We're going to jump down to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. A few things to report tonight. I want to start with the district's student safety data system report for the twenty-twenty twenty-twenty-one school year. This report is a system used for school reporting of incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons offenses, substance abuse offenses taking place in school, and H I B taking place in school, on grounds, or at school-sponsored activities. The H I B trainings of students and staff and H I B programs are also reported. This data is collected by the New Jersey Department of Education to fulfill various federal and state reporting requirements. Data is compiled at the local school level. Principals and assistant principals work with school anti-bullying specialists to input the data into the system. Our data from last year. We had a total of... We had a total of eight incidents. One of those incidents led to removal of a student. We had nine alleged H I B cases. We had seventy H I B trainings, and that's staff-wise, different programs. It's not, you know, they can be short or long, it's not seventy hours per set, and seventy-one H I B programs for students. So, we're reading these numbers and this report into our record tonight so that we have it on record and we're in compliance with the New Jersey Department of Education requirements. Moving on to that, I'd like to welcome our two new student representatives to the board, James Stickell and Kaylee Clavish. I'm sure your family members are glad you could see them up here, and we are excited to hear your monthly reports. Welcome. Washington School, big topic for everybody. I want to acknowledge the flood in the Washington School basement and all of the work that underwent to addressing that problem and safely moving students into our various schools. I want to start with the Township Fire Department Chief Kevin Zidka and all of the first responders who came out at four in the morning on September second. You kindly assisted with pumping out the basement until it had been emptied. I know it was a long night for the first responders, and I thank each and every one of them. We also had a tremendous amount of support from our parents in the Washington School P S O. Their kind words of encouragement really helped a lot of us feel better about the situation. I also wanted to acknowledge my administrative team. We quickly set up a war group on Friday, September third, and it was all hands-on deck. Everyone pitched in to help, and that too was a nice deal. Keith Rizzuto and Marion Confini continue to work hard on all aspects of the restoration. Mrs. Calianto has been outstanding throughout this entire process, and she got very little rest over the great day weekend, and so there's so much to do with a short amount of time. She made sure everything was ready for the teachers and the students. Speaking of the teachers and the students, I want to thank them too for their flexibility and willingness to just roll with the situation. Finally, I want to extend my appreciation to the Board of Education for their patience and unwavering support during this time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Mortimer. In the interest of time, I'm going to shorten my superintendent's report, okay? And just...
What? I call him not the superintendent?
I'm going to shorten my board president's report, thank you. All happens that I want to know. And I'm just going to add to Dr. Mortimer's comments and just say thank you, Dr. Mortimer. Dr. Mortimer is a gracious, humble leader who will not assign credit to himself, but we have a lot to be thankful for, and I just want to thank you very much, in addition to all the individuals that you mentioned. And I'm going to reserve my further comments for letters to the public, which you should expect to receive in the next several days, but just regarding some board initiatives like surveys that are coming out on video broadcasting versus live streaming and on our superintendent search. And that will conclude my report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. This is the district report. So, I have a bunch of stuff on here, but Dr. Mortimer had sent out a recent release to everyone. I'll just touch on some of it. You know, so a lot of the work that's happening at Washington School is temporary work so that we can get in. We have temporary electrical panels, temporary boilers coming into play, working with the town, contractors, buildings and grounds, and again, all the administrative staff within the district. We've gotten permission from the town to set up these temporary structures so that we can then continue to finalize what needs to be done. A lot of the work cannot be completed in any timeframe that would allow us to get students in the building. So, this temporary setup allows us to do it. So, the electrical panel, we have this temporary break, and we're going to have to rebuild the whole system. So, it's going to take some engineering, and again, we need new parts to come in. So, the hot water system, that will be permanent. That's probably the only thing that...
That's probably the only thing that's permanent. We'll get that's coming in on Monday. Boiler-- Again, temporary boiler until the boiler is fixed and the parts are replaced. That will be in place. The temporary boiler is an enclosed C container that will be on the blacktop outside and piped in through the building. So we'll put a construction fence around it to secure it, but you're not going to see-- It's not going to be a hot boiler out there. Someone could go and touch it. It's going to be enclosed within, and it will be running off of natural gas. So they've got to pipe into the natural gas, the PSCG line that we have. So we won't have any diesel or fuel. Don't have to worry about delivery of fuel. The boilers-- That project's set to begin on Monday and completed by Thursday. Or starting this weekend. They're getting all paperwork, getting mobilizing, and it'll all be outside on Monday. And it will be set to be completed on Thursday. As Dr. Mortimer mentioned in her email this evening, we're looking for the October 12th start in first-day school at Washington School. So everyone, finish this. And I'll just touch quickly. I know we were a little late. So security vegetables. I have an update meeting with the contractor tomorrow to review open items. We have some interior doors at Washington and Berkeley that are on backorder. The glass transaction windows for the office staff is still pending. We have floor mats that are still pending. And the ceiling tiles at the high school, we have temporary tiles outside, but that delivery's coming tomorrow. The electrical audit-- Engineers are still working on it. Obviously, our hand-- Our card has been thrown to us with Washington School, so we'll be fast-tracking that particular audit to get what we need. When we rebuild the electrical panel, we're going to rebuild it with our future needs in mind. They-- I was told they can also redesign it to be able to be upgraded with new power that will be required from PSCG, but it can be toned down. So we don't have-- Currently, there's not enough power at Washington to upgrade anything. So we could build a new system that will allow us to increase the load capacity coming into the building. But have that designed now and ready for future. That requires a lot of work, logistical planning with PSCG itself, since we have to upgrade the outdoor transformer that supplies the power to the school-- To the building. So it's not a job that happens overnight. I'm told transformers from PSCG right now are on a six-to-nine-month lead time. So-- But we will-- We are continuing doing the audit. We will have, like I said, the report late November, early December. And we will determine our needs for our budget planning for the upcoming school. And at that--
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rizzuto. Student Representatives' Report.
I'll start off with the report from the elementary schools. Our elementary schools have been emulating teamwork, kindness, and positivity since the school year began. While they faced the challenges of Washington School being closed, the administration, teachers, and staff have stopped at nothing to ensure all elementary students are in-person learning and provided an authentic start to the school year. While some of the plans continue to be refined, the elementary schools are thrilled to report a successful execution. They are excited to serve all children with a normal school experience focusing on academic, social, and emotional learning opportunities. They are proud to report the only things flooding their schools are safety, happiness, and a love of learning.
The middle school is off to a great start. Students and staff are safe for the start of a more normal school year. Back-to-school night last night was a success with many parents lining to virtually meet their students, and getting to know each class. There's a lot of excitement about our seasonal fall sports with volleyball now, it's traditional season, and the first season for soccer teams. They are also starting competitions now and we're looking forward to a great season. Clubs and activities are also getting underway with interest rates. J-Pac tracks tomorrow. I'm virtual comparison into the first week in October.
Moving on to high school academics. High school students are glad to be back at school for in-person learning five-days-a-week. Seniors have to get the college admissions process with help from their teachers, administrators, and guidance counselors. On Tuesday evening, many seniors attended the senior college program hosted by the Guidance Department to familiarize themselves with the college admissions process. Admission representatives from several colleges visited our school this week to meet with juniors and seniors and many more we will meet in the coming weeks. September 15th to October 15th, this Hispanic Heritage Fund. The high school media specialist, Ms. DeRichter, is collecting artifacts of his hats, flags, books, et cetera, to put on display in the media center. Mrs. Kaufman's eight key and honors English classes have completed their interview projects modeled after the book, It's Complicated: The American Teenager, by photojournalist Robin Bowman. Students partnered up and asked for another introspective questions using a voice recording. They then transcribed the interview into a Word document and learned how to edit their material to preserve the unique voice of their subject through syntax, punctuation, and structural stylistic choices.
All of the western sports teams have started their seasons on the ground now, recording wins across the first few weeks of the season. The girls tennis team is much improved this year as they won all fifteen of their matches at the Commonwealth Invitational tournament to take home first place. They are off to a four-and-three start with their most recent win over Furby. Senior night's rugby game this weekend throughout the next couple of weeks. Most notably, over thirty-four seniors will be right past tomorrow night at the football game as we honor them cheerleading and football.
The wedding team players held their auditions for the ball play last Wednesday. All casting decisions have been made, and rehearsals starting on Monday. They'll be putting on the play of our town by going wilder from November 11th through 13th. The Westwood marching band's halftime show for this year is the music of Bruno Mars, featuring songs Uptown Funk, Treasure, and Runway Baby. They'll be performing at the North Jersey Band Festival at Montclair State University on October 24th. Lastly, the band and choir classes are very happy to be back fully in person making music again.
The annual club fair has been moved to Monday, September 27th, due to inclement weather. Students will have the honor training to learn about the thirty-plus clubs Westwood has to offer. The academic, decathlon, and debate team have both already been through me in preparation for their upcoming virtual competitions. The student council election process is underway. Petitions and speeches were due last Friday for all students running for one of the class officer positions. Campaigning has begun, and the class officer elections will be held next Tuesday, September 28th. Good luck to all candidates. That concludes our report.
Okay, thank you both. And once again, welcome to the days, and thank you for your service.
All right. Moving on to committee reports. Policy and Governance. Mr. Robert Davison is actually not here. Do we have someone? Okay. Let me-- Actually, I would like to address that. It's like great. Thank you, Mr. First Class. But let's jump down to the finance facilities. Mr. Gersmeyer.
Okay, that was Mrs. Colombo's idea. I'm not going to take it right off the top. Okay, finance facilities met on September 15th for the first time during the new school year. There's a lot to cover, the meat of which you've heard from either Dr. Mortimer's report or Mr. Rizzuto's report. I will touch on it at the top as well. So you heard about the Washington School update. I just want to put an anecdote in there that the amount of detail and work that the board has seen from administration has been impressive, staggering. It's a feat that is hard to do again. And I just give everyone credit for everything that's been going on during dealing with what happened at Washington School. So I know Washington parents are extremely grateful, and I'm speaking for myself. And I think all board members want to say how grateful we are to them. So thank you for that. And I want to board you with, you know, boiler parts and-- Pretty well. He covered them very well. Moving on. District Goal Three references a plan for facilities and policy improvements that will support optimal class sizes and healthier classroom environments. So in particular, the topic of class size, which is something I've been extremely interested in for about three or four years now. We had some proposed new ranges of class sizes coming from Policy and Curriculum Committee and the Finance Committee local to local. The recommendation is to slightly adjust-- Just to give you some background, because you're not looking at what I'm looking at. There are proposed numbers for minimum size, optimal size, and maximum size for each of the K to five grade levels. For K one-two, the suggestion is from curriculum was minimum of fifteen, optimal being eighteen, maximum of twenty, which is a significant decrease in what's been happening over the years. Grades three, four, and five were a minimum of eighteen, optimal twenty-two, max twenty-five. The big difference was that K one-two, the value dropped from eighteen, twenty to twenty-five to fifteen, eighteen, twenty. After discussion with Dr. Mortimer, Dr. Mortimer, Mr. Rizzuto, and Mr. Caffini, the Finance Committee-- The Finance Facilities Committee thought it would be best to go a little bit further with the grades three, four, and five, keep the minimum eighteen, optimal down to twenty-one, max to twenty-four. Just try-- And just try for the optimal classroom level. Now, it's obviously just a recommendation. We're trying to do the best for the students, but of course, the administration has to look into what that would mean in terms of facilities, budgeting, and have to incorporate the most recent demographic study, which we obtained in June of 2020. That, of course, is pending what's happening in the township with certain building projects, which there's been updates even in the last twenty-four hours. So I'm sure this will be another topic for our next finance facility. So that's going to keep going. But it's something that is always on the forefront of our minds. Moving on. Goal Four is commissioning the administration to facilitate external safety and security audit and study. So there's proposals out there to get some security audits for the current operations of the district. The conclusion and recommendation is to review the proposals once they're received and present them back to the Finance Committee. At some point, that's going to be disseminated to the full board, but it's going to start with Finance Committee. The topic of Class Three Officers came up as an item of discussion as well. We talked about some of the goals, some more details about Class Three Officers, what alternative options there would be, what other ramifications on budgeting and staffing, and those kinds of things. And the recommendation is that there should be a presentation to the public to explain Class Three Officers, and also then survey the public on the needs and wants of Class Three Officers. That should be-- How they should be employed in the district. And that survey is something that will come down the road. Just talked about salary guide for our aides. There's a conversation about the steps of the guide, versus years of service of the guide. It's really more of a-- Just to make sure everyone's on the same page. And there's a topic for a couple of meetings already, multiple previous agenda items. So the guide will stay as steps. And just to reiterate that it was a one-time adjustment based on years of service. So people are the max staff at the top step. It allows more flexibility in awarding the longer tenured-- Lowercase t, of course-- Tenured, longer-employed aides in the district so that they don't cat-out sort. We also discussed the use of facilities by outside organizations. So this is a big change from either bill because we're having outside organizations in due to COVID. So the conclusion recommendation is to offer use of facilities under current circumstances. That will be evaluated due to COVID restrictions. Additional fees will be incurred if cleaning is needed due to COVID. Weekend functions, the district will charge a fee for additional custodial services as well. So that's the recommendation, and we can discuss whether it is a full board need. That was pretty much the topic we discussed. And as I said, we didn't cover enough in that meeting. I like to say that was only about a ninety-minute meeting, but it was pretty impressive how much we went through. We talked about flexible boundaries for kindergarten classrooms, another hot topic to mention. It will be discussed, our whole business today, with the whole board. And that's one of those things that we should talk about as a whole board. The next committee meeting is scheduled for October 13th. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gersmeyer. Why don't we just continue down the list and we'll go with curriculum and instruction with Ms. Semler.
Hi. So we do not have-- I don't have any report for you since our last meeting. The Curriculum Committee is meeting again on October 18th at four o'clock. But I did want to follow up on my last report because it was quite a lengthy report. I had introduced to the public some of the controversial health topics that are going to be implemented in all of our schools. But I wanted to let you know that Dr. Mortimer is working on with her administration. They're working on opt-out option for our parents. That's going to be communicated to the public sometime in October. When it's completed, they will be sending a letter to all the parents and all the community outlining all the new standards prior to any of those being implemented. So none of that is going to be-- Is going to begin or start prior to parents getting that notification. So I just wanted to update you on that. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Semler. And we'll move on now to negotiations with Ms. Hanlon.
No input.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will look back to Policy and Governance. Fortunately, I was out of meeting, and I do have the minutes in front of me. So just to give you a general overview of that meeting, we opened our meeting on September 13th with the discussion about existing policies and regulations. The conversation originated at the board table, and then it was deferred-- Sent to the Policy Committee for further work and with the request that it would then report back to the full Board of Education. And so we were particularly focused on Policies 5120, and for the public's sake, if you're not familiar with 5120, that has to do with the assignment of students. And we're talking specifically about the assignment of students to school buildings in this particular circumstance. Policy 5120 also has a regulation that governs the way that assignment occurs. And then we also discussed Policy 8110, which is about attendance areas. And so we actually examined those two policies in combination because we believe strongly that they are-- They have a lot to do with the same issue that has arisen from year to year. And in an effort to resolve that issue and come up with a plan that perhaps would serve families, which students better, we would look at them in combination. And so the result of that conversation was to eliminate the regulation that goes along with 5120. And the reason for that is that the Policy 8110, which is attendance areas, would supersede 5120. So in other words, the administration would have to do a thorough implementation of 8110 before referring to 5120. And so that-- We recognized as a policy committee that that would no longer-- There would-- How can I say? With that implementation,[1724.28]
would, how can I say, with that implementation, there would, there would no longer be a need for the regulation that goes along with policy fifty-one-twenty. So now, what does that actually mean in terms of substance? So the conversation at the board level started, had had to do with the assignment of students to buildings. So for instance, if you lived in Westwood and you were, and you are somewhere in the middle of Brookside and Berkeley schools, there's what's called a flexible boundary, or flexible, a flexible boundary zone, and that boundary zone could change from time to time, and could shift from time to time, but that, not without a thorough study by the administration and a recommendation to the board in a timely manner. But the way it would work out is that with the elimination of the regulation of fifty-one-twenty, students would no longer be placed based on a first-come, first-served basis, they would be based on an effort to keep them in their neighborhoods. And so for instance, if you can picture it, if you had Berkeley and Brookside with the flexible boundary in the middle, if there were an abundance of students in one school and they had to be, and some of the students needed to be relocated to another school because the sections here are too large, the sections here couldn't accommodate those students, you would go to your flexible boundary, which, right, in theory and quite practically is close enough to both schools where theoretically a child could remain in a neighborhood, as opposed to a child who's all the way over here, the two schools are here, and now that child is right here because mom and dad registered them, three days later, that is good to his stay. When there's, like I said, clearly this, this zone right here would satisfy the definition of being in a neighborhood for either school. So we actually, we asked Mr. Rosado to go back and please modify the diagram that serves Washington Township, which is, which, which lies, I can't, well, actually, much more in between now than it did prior to his revision, in between Washington School and George School. And there were issues in both towns. Mr. Rosado did modify that drawing, and, and as a result, I think we have two very healthy scenarios now in Washington Township and in Westwood, meaning that we have a plan that probably serves, that's probably serves, that absolutely serves students better when it comes to being able to maintain their, their, their locations or remain in their neighborhoods and attend what we could consider reasonably considered neighborhood schools. So as you can, so if we're, if we're doing that thoroughly exhaustive implementation of eighty-one-ten, you can see now that there would be no need for the regulation for fifty-one-twenty, which basically spelled out the first-come, first-served application. Okay? So the committee members agreed to abolish regulation fifty-one-twenty, they suggested additional wording noting the above in red, and I'll just, I'll just read you some of the additional language so you can get a sense. So the superintendent may assign students to a school other than designated, other than designated, than that designated by the attendance area, yet within a flexible boundary area, when such an exception is justified by circumstances and/or is in the best interest of the student. So these are exceptions to the rule. In order to maintain consistent class size in four elementary schools, that would be an example, parents slash guardians will be notified of kindergarten school assignments on or around May fifteenth of each year. The guarantee of a flexible boundary placement expires annually on May fifteenth, as the superintendent may need to place a new kindergarten student outside the regular attendance area. This policy will supersede, will supersede policy fifty-one-twenty for building placement unless all revisions in eighty-one-ten are thoroughly exhausted and/or extending, so it doesn't prevail, which is the administration may need to refer to policy fifty-one-twenty. But again, there is no longer any regulation fifty-one-twenty. Okay?
Propose that I have.
What, what's the board?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, this is, this is accurate. All right. In terms of follow-up for more August ninth, Policy Committee meeting, we reviewed policy alert number two-twenty-three and policy alert number two-twenty-four, and no action is needed on that at this time. I believe they're included for first reading. Okay. And then we also reviewed policy stress, or policy alert, actually, I was going to give more, I'm not sure if I have that one. To be in favor of putting these policies on this September agenda for the first reading. And then finally, there was a policy review per Governor's Executive Order two-five-three, and, which is off the agenda, stress is to develop following policy to address the vaccination and testing requirements of executive order two-five-three, the added effort for education agenda for under the old, and to have that in effect for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year. And that basically concludes the report for the September thirteenth meeting. As far as the next meeting, I believe the committee is still to be determined. Do we come up with that date?
About the date we're reading for September.
All right, all right, thank you. Great. That concludes our policy, video reports, and we are now jumping to item sixteen on the agenda, which is public forum. During this portion of the meeting, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on any topic specifically addressed in this agenda or on any other questions, comments, or concerns that may be respect to the operation of this school. The board requests that individuals sign, speakers list your name and address, and asks that all remarks be directed to the board as a whole and not to individuals. The board asks for members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of the other, of other, of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning a district staff member is in the interest of concern to a resident, the matter should be referred to the responsible building principal, the superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education, either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered, may be discussed, may be discussed tonight under the appropriate agenda items for new business at this meeting, or in subsequent meetings under the old business, under old business, or during the board, or during board committee meetings, if that is appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to five minutes of duration. The public forum will be limited to one hour of duration. Okay? Would anyone like to?
Hello.
Yes.
Okay. I came to acknowledge more voices who were having in Washington Township. I want to first express my sincere gratitude for coordinating a plan for all the Washington School children so quickly. I'm sure that I was not alone in front of an impossible virtual start when we heard schools flooding. Seeing the creativity to accommodate an all-in-person start with one less building speaks volumes for this administration, children-first focus, and this is very much appreciated. I myself have a child possibly up here and one at George School, so I'd love to see what's.
Third grade.
Yeah, third grade, yes. I am relieved about the, an impossible opt-out option for the newly adopted so-called health curriculum setting for teaching children about masturbation, anal sex, and the like. I'm hoping that can be provided quickly. I was very prepared to take an unexcused absence. Briefly, I want to show my support again for any school employee choosing not to get this mandated vaccination, and that testing will be on the district's time and die, and that no segregation at any point be initiated or accepted based on medical status. Lastly, a reminder that the current mask mandate was initiated and still in place without any science or data that they reduce spread or concurrently are efficacious for children by the same administration that had just mandated masking two-year-olds. Unlegislated ethics should not be even elaborately accepted without clearly identified targets for their removal. Otherwise, why have a located official settle? Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to come up and speak?
Hi, Kelly Amelia, I'm Lady Goodwin-Tarres of Westwood. It spun into with a little, like, obviously fear sells and deals with people's attention, and I think it was incredibly irresponsible when the presentation was made regarding the new health mandate on the state, because people heard scary words and they think they're like first graders and we taught out masturbation, and I'm pretty sure this is somewhere that's not the case, and I think more information needs to ask with terrorists. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak?
Let's help back the polls. My name is President Man, I was not gave to the terrorists in Westwood. And the last time I was here, it was October, it was in twenty-four, as a student, my, my place for graduation afterwards, it was inside, so it's been a while. But I did start getting Board of Ed meetings online, and it was totally worth it, it was amazing, and wonderful to see how all of you give your time and make all your efforts, thoughts into what happens and how it is educated, and it's really an awesome process. And I will say, just, I know you're a person who's been on the contact for a while, the videotaping and live forecasting of board meetings, I think it's really important in this whole town. I think higher the bar of entry, the lower the participation is, and I wonder if what the numbers were from those lives turning four meetings, how many people were paying attention to what was online versus, you know, the handful of people who are here tonight. I think you're going to get a robust and a happy community to the extent we can, to create, to broadcast live. I don't know if I have all of it, I don't have to do it, I've commented, I think you want to speak, probably want to speak, but I do want to work for so many, I think the only way I can participate real time is through those live streams, and I really appreciate it. I will also say, I want to thank Dr. Mortimer for the transparency on COVID data, for bringing a lot of students and cases that exist. And I want to congratulate you and the leadership of all different schools administrators, those members are really impressive and hard to see, there's not transmission happening in schools. And I don't know if it's because of the masks or who we have, but I would say that it is, if you're over, you were, you know, we, I didn't know what the data was exactly, it wasn't really, it was really relevant, and I really appreciate it. And I know it's hard to stand there and execute orders, the mask mandates, that kind of thing, it creates a lot of activity, and I know it's not easy to do, and I understand where that activity is coming from, but at the same time, there should be a celebration of how safe these kids are at this point, this back-to-school period. A sincere congratulation to the Board of the School, for the staff, administration, for getting them. So.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak?
Joe McAlister, three sixty-seven, Wilson County, Washington Township. I just, I did not come prepared to speak, but when I see what's up here on the stage and when I see how quickly we're getting repairs and taking care of the Washington Township, and as an educator myself, seeing how the back-to-school night was handled last night, I just got to say I am nothing but impressed with the faculty, staff, and administration of this district right now. You know, looking at back-to-school night, the model for Westwood last night, you know, these teachers are going through these eight-minute, summarized blocks of the entire year, back-to-back after a full day of school in a, you know, obviously it's slightly more complex situation for any person, but every person that we saw speaking about our classes spoke with, you know, energy and vigor. These are people who I'm sure, if we look at the situation here, must be exhausted by what they're doing, but they still bring their A to the table, and I just want to thank all of them for their service to this district, for our children's special, and that's right, I was supposed to.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, then with that, we will close public forum. And whoever agenda items. Yes, you can address all of them, Dr. Mortimer. I apologize, I'm a little off tonight, if you haven't noticed. Yes, I'm actually just, I'm actually sitting, I'm actually home right now, worried about my laptop flooding into my, my family room again, so I apologize if I seem distracted. I'm sorry, guys, please.
So thank you to everybody who came out tonight to, to express, you know, an opinion or to give your ideas related to a topic. I don't have specific, my notes that I took, I don't really see very specific questions, but I just want to clarify, you know, I don't think what Mrs. Sandler gave her curriculum for, I think she was just kind of going over all the different topics that we discovered, discussed at the Curriculum Committee meeting. You know, we, we recognize wholeheartedly there are different opinions about the new health standards, and we respect all of those opinions, we're not discounting, we're the district, you know, and the board, and the Curriculum Committee, nobody's taking a side on one way or the other, we're just, you know, discussing what we heard, you know, from parents and what we're anticipating from parents. So we're really very proud of the work that's going into the new health curriculum. We're going to have it ready almost a year before it needs to be, you know, implemented, and the new standards do not need to be implemented until September twenty-twenty-two, but we started the work over the summer, maybe a little bit before that. So we have, we investigated different health programs that would cover these standards. The physical education teachers met over the summer to work on a curriculum for the new program that was selected. They're going to be working again on the October tenth professional day to come up, to finalize the parent letter that's going to go out, and all of the resources that are going to be made available to parents so that parents can see exactly what the instruction is like. You know, as we, in the last one's Curriculum Committee Report, we talked about the Great Body Shop is the new curriculum that we brought for those health standards. We will have resources for parents where you can actually see the lessons that are going to be taught, you can see the state standards that correspond with those lessons. And then in addition, when students have these lessons or they're coming home for the week, there's a parent sheet that goes home as well. In light of the fact that we realize, you know, that there is, that there are strong opinions one way or the other, maybe not so strong opinions, but just some people are more neutral, none of the new content that could be deemed as being controversial per se will be taught until this parent letter goes out, until the parents are completely informed. The teachers know that, don't start teaching the Great Body Shop just yet, you know, we're going to be working on the curriculum, we're going to be working on getting familiar with the resources, so that the rollout is as transparent as possible, and the parents have all of the information they need without having to call a school, you know, or to whatever. So we have an open mind to all of this, and, you know, that was discussed at the Curriculum Committee meeting, so we just thank the parents for their patience, we just need another couple of weeks to put everything together for you, but we are highly confident you will be pleased with what you see when, when it does come home.
Thank you, Dr. Mortimer. Okay, now moving on to agenda items. Administration and governance. Ms. Hamlin, would you please, would you please make a motion for items A through C?
Yes, let's make a motion for items A, B on the curriculum agenda, and C on the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Cloco, thank you, discussion. Mrs. Cloco?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerstner?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Quantillo?
I'd like to say yes to items A, one-
I'd like to say yes to items A, 1, B, and C.
Yes, yes. Mrs. Sandler?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Motion carry. All right, I'm actually going to defer in Mr. Edward Dowd House's. Mrs. Colombo, would you please move policy and governance items A through D?
I'd like to make a motion to move, to move policy.
Just the agenda.
Oh, policy agenda A through D.
Sorry, it's written down.
Sorry.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Rosado.
Mrs. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Gerstmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
For items A1, B, C, and D, yes. Respect the policy items A2, policy P1648.13, school employee vaccination requirements. I'd like to make a statement prior to asking my vote. And I think that this blanket policy comes out of Executive Order 253, but there should be some exceptions to the policy and also the executive order. While I understand the need for safety and healthy schools and employees, I also understand that people have a fundamental right to privacy free from intrusion from the government. With many unknowns about COVID-19, vaccinations will long-term affect all people. And the knowledge that people may have health issues that could be exacerbated by receiving the vaccine and can't good conscience vote and mandate an employee to do something with their body. I think the state has not considered the burden it's going to place on all the districts in the state to do this testing and whether or not employees will be out of work and the costs associated with that. So this is another example of New Jersey and their unfunded mandates. I don't want to go into board. I don't want to go into work without Dr. Mortimer. I know she's done some problem solving in the area of the employee testing and stuff like that. But in good conscience, I can't agree to require vaccines for COVID-19 from district employees. So therefore, I will abstain.
Mrs. Sandler?
For policy A to school employee vaccination requirements, this is a tough one for me. As a board of education member, not ever expecting to be part of all the health requirements and health decisions, I'm absolutely uncomfortable mandating and enforcing all of our employees, administrators, teachers. You know, I just want to read for the public the mandate that's being provided for every person employed by Board of Education, both full and part-time, including but not limited to administrators, teachers, educational support professionals, individuals providing food, custodial and administrative support services, substitute teachers, whether employed directly by Board of Education or otherwise contracted, contractors, providers, and any other individuals performing work in the school district whose jobs duties require them to make regular visits to the school district, including volunteers. Covered workers do not include individuals who visit the school district to make one-time repairs. So I am not comfortable enforcing and mandating this for all our employees. So for A2, I'm going to have to say.
And the others?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
I am ABA for A1, B, C, and D. With regards to A2, P dash 1648 dot com three. I'm struggling currently with this policy. But my struggles are not, I want to be very clear that this is not a reflection of our administration or our superintendent based upon guidance from the CDC and other executive orders. I believe some of these directives seem to be conflicting with one another as well as telling people the rationale behind why they must get vaccinated, I believe flies in the face of reason. As such, I lack the faith that the state has provided a basis for this necessity. Therefore, I find this requirement to be an intrusion of personal, individual personal liberty. I will abstain.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Motion carry. All right, could I ask, Mrs. Sandler, would you please move personnel items A through Y? I didn't know we had a tradition. Sorry, Mrs. Sandler.
I'd like to move personnel items A through Y. Do I have a second?
Second. Mr. Pontillo, did you say second? Okay, discussion. Dr. Mortimer, discussion.
I wanted to acknowledge the fact that we have Mr. Glenn Becker, the new audience today. He will be the director of buildings and grounds, starting a few weeks in the district. We're very fortunate to have you. I can see your real go better and you can get things done. So I think you understand where we're looking to go. And I can't wait to work, you know, hand-in-hand with you very closely, so welcome to the West Virginia School District.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
We also have in our audience, we have Gemla Surgeon. She will be our new manager of HR at Lions, starting again in a couple, couple weeks, six weeks or so, and doing some crossover days. And, you know, we're excited to have you as well. You have a wealth of experience. And we are eager to have very, you know, policies and protocols and procedures and really top-notch HR department in our district. So we're really eagerly waiting your arrival as well, in addition to Mr. Becker. So I want to thank you for coming tonight and welcome.
Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mortimer. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Rosado, roll call, please. Mrs. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Gerstmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandler?
Yes, and welcome. Go get her if you like.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes, and I want to officially welcome you to Washington School.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Motion carry and welcome. Mr. Gerstmeyer, would you please move finance facilities, items A through R?
Can I just say what he said? I'd like to move finance facilities items A through R, this is all the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Sneak?
Yes, I mean, the obsolete chromos, is there no value at all for some of these, particularly the lower grades, where you have a chromo that stays at home and a chromo that stays in school? Because my kid's backpack, about 45 pounds, she's only about 30, so they're just trying to figure out a way to lighten it or either that or invest in some sort of a petardus with a payment plan.
I believe, I know this has come up in the past, and I believe at certain point the chromo, it becomes outdated. It doesn't, it doesn't update. I mean, I can act it apart. Is that guys? That's absolutely right.
Yeah, that's exactly.
I'm actually, every year. So, but we do recycle them. So we do enter everywhere with the company, with the cooperatives who purchases and we give some recycling process.
Roll call, Mr. Rosado? Mrs. Colombo?
Yes.
Mr. Gerstmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandler?
Yes.
Mr. Sneak?
Yes.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Motion carry. Okay, finance facilities, Mr. Gerstmeyer, would you please move finance A through R? I know we just said that, I'm sorry. Completely. You can tell I guess I'm a fine guy. Please don't flood it, everybody. Please don't lose faith. I know, I'm just, right now, I'm sure my house. We don't have any family. All right. Curriculum programs, Mrs. Sandler. We have many items to see. Okay, let's move to old business. We have an open discussion, a town zone for kindergarten placement. Okay, so we'll open that discussion, the old business.
So at our last, excuse me, at our last meeting, this was presented with some maps. Finalized the maps, you know, in the process of finalizing the maps, we'll have them again, you know, final version for the next facilities, meeting in October. And we'll be putting those maps on our kindergarten registration page so it's transparent for parents as to if you live in one of these gray areas.
Yeah, you want me? Yes. Do you want to talk about ways that we have discussed or? So the, I think the area of question was George, the George School and Washington School flexible boundary. We have a little corner in the wood section, essentially from the high school all the way down to Old Lafayette Road would be, would be the transition area. What we're doing, what was recommended was to go from that area up to Pascac Road, down to Washington Ave, and then create that as a flexible boundary area.
I wanted to bring up, we talked about this in finance, so as we did talk about bus ramifications too. I just want to make sure that we're not introducing over two-mile distances with the flexible boundaries for. Correct. Mr. Sneak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, give a big thank you to Dr. Mortimer, Mr. Rosado, Mrs. Calviento, the entire administration team, the faculty, staff, the receiving schools, ability to maintenance folks. The feedback that I received overwhelmingly from the parents, whether it be now softball game, soccer field, drop-off pickup, has just been the level of praise and credibility that you all have earned over the last three weeks. And we're talking about three weeks today. Your speed to action, your speed to decision, your speed to execution, the level of communication. But throughout the entire process has been beyond appreciated by everybody. So I just wanted to let you know that the community within Washington School, parents are incredibly grateful and thankful for everything you all have done for their children and for their families. So on behalf of all those folks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sneak. Do we have any? So I have a question regarding the, the new diagrams, right? Just in terms of policy A110, which is attendant zones. So, so, just for everyone's sake, policy, right? When you have policies, you know, your board policy manual, which is of course all electronic now, it consists of actually four type, different types of documents. You have your policy, and instead of directly having your policy, it could be a regulation. Some policies require regulations. Some might create regulations such as support policy. You need specificity. You need, you need, you know, those are kind of like the take-action piece of the administration, the district, and the schools. But then in addition to policy and regulation, you have your, you have what are called forms. And then you also have exhibits. And so, you know, a form might be something that, so for instance, like you might have some type of health policy, and they might be very specific forms. And you want to standardize those, and you want parents to have access to them. You could put those in your policy manual and attach it to a policy or a, or a, or a, a regulation as a form. The piece I want to speak about is the fourth piece, which is the exhibit. So what I'm wondering is, might we consider attaching two diagrams that Mr. Rosado creates for us as exhibits to policy A110? I think there's value in that because the policy itself will drive annual review by the administration and presentation to the board with ample time if, if, if a change is necessary. So I just feel like those documents are important enough that we might include those as exhibits and attach them and suddenly become official documents to that policy. Is that?
Yeah, it kind of goes with the discussion we had regarding the fact that it would also show up on our website under where the Realtors access information to the public to look at.
Yes.
So that we're perfectly in there because we want to make sure that this information is readily available. They weren't having to dig all over to find it. So yeah, that's great. We should have those maps right by where the policies that refer to.
So we have to have a discussion with Strauss Swayze. You know, I mean, the last conversation that I had with him was, hey, can we? Because right now, I'm not mistaken, the electronic resource accommodates policies and regulations, but I'm not sure that it accommodates forms and exhibits yet. Who manages our policy? Are we, the Strauss Swayze manual for the district? Is it, is it, is it Mrs. Suarez? Mrs. Doran? So we could probably find out whether or not they can do that. And if not, we could always just, we could ask, just scan it in as part of the policy, right? So they could attach it to the policy. Because exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking. It'll be for anyone in it, especially Realtors or parents who are considering buying the district, that it's up there and it's attached to that policy so they can't miss it. Because, yeah, it's quite, it's quite a, it's quite a shift in terms of, yeah. So, okay, so do we all, are we all comfortable with that? If the skinny, we had to be like, well, I mean, right. If these are the, I don't know, the policy regulations site that is driving it, does it allow homeowners to just have a store somewhere on the district website? And you can jump to it and go.
We can look into it.
Right, exactly.
Well, the legislature was not checking.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion on attendance zones regarding placements?
I want to point out, there's a lot of meat in the pork about what we're talking about. And the May 15th date is pretty important. So I'm not saying, I think the committee's not saying, various committees aren't saying that, you know, someone could move them to the district last second and just, you know, overcrowd our class. Because that is a little against each other, especially what we're having about optimal classing, right? So that May 15th, it's between when registration opens and May 15th is the intent to do what's right for neighbors, right? And then after May 15th, it's essentially bear their space. Is that accurate? The intent of what we're talking about, just to make sure I categorize that correctly by saying, you know, the first number is served, kind of still is in effect after May 15th because of late people leaving. There's no guarantee on the average school average, what it reads to me.
Yes.
Okay, good.
But the difference is now it's not, the clock is not running from January. It's now May 15th, which is, which is, which is a tremendous benefit, you know, and a marked improvement from the average. Yes, that's right, that's right. Okay, all right, and we have any?
One more, just one more old business. I know Mr. Gerschman touched on it during finance facilities, I just, regarding the aid salaries, I mean, discussion of placement on the guide, I guess, if we were to draw a poll, that's to, if that's what the board wants to do, then we can make the corrections for the aid salaries, we can vote at the next agenda and retro back to, back, does everyone understand the concept that was discussed in finance?
Mr. Sweeney?
Just so we're clear, anybody that has nine years of service or more would go to level nine, eight years of service, they would go to eight, seven years of service for the cell, and that's a one-time only adjustment across the board? Yes, that's what.
Yeah, but, but nine is not usually exclusive, so nine or beyond.
Correct, nine of course, so if you have fifteen years, nine years, you got it at the same level, eight is eight, seven is seven, six is six, and then after that, it just, people just naturally progress up from there.
Correct. All in favor of that?
Just a straw poll, just showing the, the, the. Okay, so we'll act in the personnel section, we'll make those adjustments to those individuals that are affected, and you'll see a new guy salary for that, there's no need to move on the salary guide, because it's spelled out as such.
Okay, so any other old business?
No.
Okay, let's move on, let's move on to the separate, by item for old business.
Well, one, I just thank you, Keith, and everyone who made that change on the aids and moving them off to their appropriate, appreciate it. I just wanted to address, I'm still meeting, but I see that she left, but maybe she'll see this, or maybe it'll help somebody. I just want to clarify that the report that I gave at last month's meeting, the curriculum report, there's a copy of that report, which reflects all of the standards and discussions that took place during that meeting, and you can find a copy of that report on our website. On that report as well, there's a link to the New Jersey Department at its new health standards, so you can find that on there. All the information that was presented in my reports to the public was hundred percent accurate, there are new mandates with the grade levels on the report, so you can go back and read that report with the links, find the information on the website. The goal of our report was absolutely not to scare anybody, but just to inform parents, you know, we want to encourage transparency, and these are things that we need to know, and for some people, they may be scary, and that's why we're trying to work on an opt-out option, but the goal is absolutely not to scare anybody, but to inform you of what these new standards are, and they need to be addressed. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sembler. Any other old business? Okay, let's move on then, quick on, let's move on then to new business. And you don't have any, you know, oh, yes.
Hi there. These past few days, in anticipation of this first board meeting in the school year, James and I have received an abundance of emails from multiple senior students expressing concern over the time allotted for the lunch period, as it's been shortened from, I think, fifty-eight minutes to around forty-five or forty-three now. We have multiple concerns, especially including students who have science labs, as that period being cut in half, these students about less than twenty minutes to be able to get their lunch, especially if students get lunch from home. Students who go off campus or have to bring their siblings off campus during the lunch period have, but we found that like, that's not enough time for them to go get their food and come back, which also brings up a lot of safety concerns. We don't want to encourage any reckless driving, students trying to get back in time to not be late for class, especially in the senior parking lot. Additionally, I'd like to bring up the fact that we now have one minute between the end of lunch and the beginning of the next class, which is already shortened from, we used to have three minutes to in-classing period, that's been shortened to two, now we have one minute between lunch and the next class, and in these past few weeks, it's improved to be very, very ineffective, pretty much everyone is not showing up to class on time for that next period, so we just wanted to bring these issues to light and hope you consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, well said. The only question I have is, have you spoken to high school administration about this?
We have not. These emails were sent directly to us.
And that's okay, it's a learning experience, right, so just, I mean, certainly, this could come to the board table, but we do have a complaint policy, and by no means, I wish like complaints is too strong a word, but that's usually what's associated with the policy. It's basically, it's basically a chain of communication slash command, and so, what's what would be important for the students to know, and please correct me if I'm wrong, okay? But, go ahead.
I was thinking the same thing you're saying.
Okay, okay, so yeah, so I just, just as a matter of policy, I'm speaking to it not as an administrator, but just as a policy matter, and we do have a policy in place for that, and I'll make sure that we get that to you, and if you would, you would refer them to that policy, I would appreciate that, and please, I understand, it's not being, the board is not shirking any responsibility, it's not kicking the can, it's that, just out of respect for the, the level, there's actually two levels before board, would be school administration, and then if they're not satisfied at the school administration level, then they would go to the central office, most likely the superintendent's office or board designated, and then, again, if dissatisfied, it would then come to the board of education. So, please, by all means, as student representatives, share these things with us, but in terms of action, it would just be more appropriate if they went through those channels, and so we can, I'll make sure that we get that policy to, so you can share that with them.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business?
On that note, I just want to say, I do appreciate the feedback, because that is something that we have been looking at, is that this is a new schedule that was put into effect only starting this year, and one of the things that we deliberated was the lunch time for the high school students being cut short, so I appreciate the feedback, it's something that we're thinking about, and we'll be at and seeing if it's going to work for this year, so thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
As we found out last night at the Washington Township Planning Board meeting, the Yon project appears to be improved, or well, has waited to be improved. We got the final, they finally gave numbers last night, you're talking about twenty-four townhouses, three bedrooms each, forty-two regular homes, four bedrooms each, that's about two hundred and forty bedrooms. I guess my, my ask or, or question for consideration, is there, has there ever been, or is there a willingness for the board to identify or establish a liaison relationship with the planning board? Because this is just one of another, you've got the Franklin project coming down the road, speaking to friends who do the planning and zoning, I was, my question to them today was, well, how quickly does this happen? His comment was, you could have this thing happen in a couple months, AKA this for Christmas, he said it could be next May or June. He said his recommendation was just have kind of more formal conversations from board to board, just to understand what's going on. He said it's something where there's all sorts of different scenarios that could pop. He said what you want to do is be able to have some sort of internal connection or communication going on, board to board, so my, my, often, my, my thought for this group is, has this ever been thought of, has this ever been done, is this something that we think provides value? Because like I said last night, it was, they, as far as I can tell, they got final approval, we're talking about a lot of bedrooms, potentially a lot of kids are coming in, and he also suggested that as these homes are built, they will be occupied with families, so it's not, you're not going to be waiting until all seventy, all sixty-six are completed before you're going to have residents move in, so it's just something I throw out there as a way to kind of have communication board to board, so we can understand what's going down the pipe.
So, so the suggestion on the table is to create a liaison position, a board member liaison position between the board and the planning board committee?
Correct, correct, have someone or somebody's act as that communication conduit between us and the planning, and ideally potentially, probably, it's, I don't believe in zoning at this point, because like I say, Franklin Court's coming down the road, that's forty-four units as well, so.
So liaison to the planning board?
Right.
And that would be, liaison would be to attend meetings, not to sit on the planning, would it be to sit on the planning?
No, just to have one, to bring information back to the board.
Correct. Also, but also make perhaps to speak on behalf of the board, that.
Correct, correct, because there was no official voice, and several parents offered comments to say, well, there's one gentleman in the town, his comment was, well, how's this going to affect the school? And the mayor kind of didn't really offer any concrete, because he didn't feel appropriate, which I understand, but it, there needs, I think there needs to be some sort of bilateral communication between them and us to understand what's going on, and how quickly these things are going to happen. Is it two months, is it six months, is it twelve months? I don't know, you're talking about a project that's been out there, since Mr. hasn't, you know, the town engineers have listed twenty years of my life, that's now come to a close, so I just think we must have some sort of direct conversation with those folks to understand what's going on, when it's coming, and how quickly we need to prepare.
Mr. Gerschman?
Yeah, maybe we can model after the relationship with the borough, the Westwood Council each year has a board of ed liaison, that's part of their council, and for joint conversations like the Berkeley Park situation, a small committee, an ad hoc committee, board members would talk with the mayor and that council liaison, so I don't know if that, I don't know if the Township Planning Board also has a Township Council liaison, or planning board, that might be the connection we need to make.
Yes, they would.
And then kind of get monthly updates or bi-weekly updates, some unofficial ad hoc committee or something, I think would be wise, just a mile, how we think, the Westwood would be perfect to do with the Yon project.
Yeah, having that on the zoning board, yes, you have to have, the way legally they're set up, your planning boards and your zoning boards have town officials among them. My worry would be, you know, having a board member go into a meeting and, you know, bring back information is one thing, but a board member can't be speaking on behalf of the board as to what the ramifications to the board are, you know, the way we work that out is to, we find out, you know, from the town what's going on, even from somebody attending a planning board meeting. With zoning board, so, we'd need to then, a new demographer to report, is how we future plan for, as you know, and most board, you know, I just worry, you know.
Yeah, no, I actually, I'm responsible, I used, I used too strong of a statement, I don't mean, I said speak on behalf of the board, that's, that's not, that's not at all what I was, what I meant, was simply information gathering, so what you would do is ask questions, you know, things like that, and again, I'll strike on behalf of the board, but you are the liaison, you're going to ask questions with the intent of bringing the answers to those questions back to the board of education, is that, are you more comfortable with that statement? I understand your discomfort, but on behalf of the board, I get that, that's not at all what I meant, but, you know, quicker than any, ask questions, get information, and bring it back to the board event, so.
I was going to nominate you, Frank. I said I was going to nominate you, but I'll give you more on your plate, but, at far, I think, maybe two people, you know, like that way, if one person can't always go.
I think we actually have someone who's very, very interested in this. So.
You'd also need to do that, also in the borough, because there's projects upcoming, you know, in all seriousness, I mean, it's nice, I can only say on the borough side, we see the agenda online, I believe the township as well, so there'll be meetings where zoning can need to attend, because of what we mean to people's own faces.
Mr. Pontillo?
Yeah, I just want to take a brief moment to thank Dr. Morton and her staff, so she was willing to take this position on, and shortly thereafter, she gets hit with the mask mandate, and had to go through making a plan for the district on masking all the kids coming back to school, and enhancing our return to school plan. In the midst of all that, she got hit with a natural disaster, which was, you know, she didn't have enough on her plate already, you know, that started to pile up. Then, you had to come up with the emergency plan for the remote learning event, we have to go to that, and on top of all that, still doing your basic job, and through all that, your communication with the board has been very timely, it's been very thorough, it's been very effective, and I've also had the opportunity to deal with Dr. Morton on a different level, and I'd like to say, keep up the good work, you're doing an excellent job for the district, and from the commentary in public, and from what I'm hearing, from parents around town, they very much appreciate your effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pontillo. So, so again, just regarding the liaison conversation, I don't want to violate, I don't want to violate any other board traditions tonight, I've already, so violated one, so do we have a protocol in place, or, you know, I don't see a reason to kick the can or shift this, I mean, I'd like to just get at right now, do we want a liaison with the planning board, and if so, perhaps we ask for a volunteer, and we, that person, here and now, again, as long as I'm not violating, so, so how are we with?
The ad hoc committee.
Right, yeah.
The board president.
Right, okay.
That's along that we clearly find the person, whether they're both.
Exactly, so you're all comfortable with me creating that, right, you know, I think upon my, my, the rights bestowed upon me, blah, 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 and then selecting someone?
Yeah, I think you should, you should, one from Westwood, one from Washington Township, and the president.
Agreed. One from Westwood, one from Washington Township, and?
And you.
Board president, as well, so that'd be three people total.
I think I saw a person.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, it's Michelle, she was just, okay, all right. All right, and I will follow up on that, and again, I will, I will, I don't know if I'll call it an ad hoc committee, I think we'll just call it a liaison, and we'll select a liaison from each town to do this side. Okay, any other new business?
I didn't, I don't want to be remiss, but I also think that we need to do a shout out to whatever town officials we didn't name. I know that from conversations with Mr. Rosado, you know, he had to do some last minute phone calls to Mayor Calamari, and he was very responsive, and got the officials that Mr. Rosado needed that same day, so, you know, I want to make sure, you know, these kind of emergencies, both Dr. Morton and Mr. Rosado and Mr. Kefini have been immensely overburdened, working round the clock, so I happen to know that part, so I just wanted to make sure that we, the board, I think a shout out to the town officials in Township and Westwood, because I know there were some Westwood officials that also helped Mr. Rosado that were not named tonight, and we just want to make, I just felt that, you know, I want to make sure that we covered all of that, please, nobody feel that we don't beg your fall that you've done. It's, it takes a village, and the two villages together really made everything happen with the leadership that we have, so just wanted to make that out.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. Any other, any other issues?
Okay.
That's a late motion, close, please.
That's a late, all right. Into executive session. Second?
Second.
This would be for the purpose of discussing the superintendents, or so, personnel, and also for negotiations.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you everyone for telling me, and once again, I apologize for the delay earlier for the end.
Thank you, yeah, we will not be returning back to the public.